Welcome to the Village of Buchanan, January 6, 2026, Board Meeting. This evening after the pledge, we're going to do a moment of silence for Richard Fay, longtime village resident and also a prior owner of the Galleman here on Albany Post Road. He, you know, he was retired, but many people remember him. He was in business for many years. So if we could do a moment of silence after the pledge. Also, in case of emergency, there is an emergency door here that will take you outside down a staircase. Do never, ever, ever, ever use an elevator, no matter where you are. In case of emergency or fire, always use the stairs. So there is a staircase behind the elevator. So just in case of emergency, please use that. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a very short agenda this evening. But I'm sure we'll be talking about a lot of things. I'm going to ask to approve the minutes for November 25, 2025 Workshop Meeting and December 16, 2025 Board Meeting. I'd like to make a motion to approve those minutes if there are no comments or questions on them.
Make a motion to approve those?
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next is comments from the floor, but agenda items only. Okay, under new business, I'm going to make a motion, open the public hearing overriding the New York State Property Tax Cap. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this is something we do every year. The property tax cap is 2%. We have to have it in place in case we go over the cap. So this is something we do, like I said, every year, just to protect ourselves. Are there any comments from the board on that? Standard, standard procedure. Any comments from the floor? All right, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing overriding the New York State Property Tax Cap. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the next I'm going to read a resolution to adopt Local Law Number One, overriding the property tax cap. Whereas the state legislature and the governor enacted legislation that establishes a property tax levy cap on the amount that a local government's property tax levy can increase each year. And whereas under this law, the total amount to be raised through property taxes charged on the municipality's taxable assessed value of property will be capped at 2% or the rate of inflation, whichever is less, with some exceptions. And whereas the state legislation provides for local governments to override the cap to protect the village from unforeseen financial circumstances. And whereas state legislation requires that in event that an override is necessary, the law enabling it must already have been adopted by the Board of Trustees. And whereas Local Law Introductory Number One of 2026 has been drafted to override the property tax levy cap, law enacted by state legislature if necessary. And whereas a public hearing was held and closed on January 6, 2026, now therefore be resolved that the Village Board of Trustees hereby adopts Local Law Number One dash 2026 to override the property tax levy cap, law enacted by state legislature. And be it further resolved that the village clerk be and hereby is directed to enter said local law in the minutes of this meeting and in the local law book of the Village of Buchanan, and to give due notice of the adoption of said local law to the Secretary of the State of New York. So can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Various updates. I have just a few questions, just to keep, you know, we're starting the year over just to keep everybody in the loop of where we are with certain, certain things. So for example, cell tower, any further information on the cell tower?
Hemp Hill, who's the, who will be the contractor building the cell tower, is doing negotiations with Verizon. He actually has reduced his fee to Verizon. And he said Verizon did say that they, that they seem acceptable to that number. And they'll get back to him by the end of January, beginning of February with a final decision. AT&amp;T, at this point, said they're not interested. So Verizon is the only one that might have interest at this point. So we should know by February if there's any interest in this area.
Okay. I'm just remembering the previous company didn't, wasn't a few companies in agreement with joining on to the cellphone tower?
They say they want to reach out to them. They never had agreements or lease agreements with anybody. They, they said they'll go reach out to all, all the companies.
I thought they had gotten some approvals from some.
I never saw one unless you saw.
I didn't.
No, I never saw an approval. I never saw any communication with any carrier. I just, they just said that if they acquire a site that the village board agrees to, then they'll reach out to the carrier.
Okay, because this is very necessary here.
Agreed.
I mean, we have our police department that doesn't have cellphone service in some areas. We have another situation that I'm not going to say publicly right now. And then we also have our fire department. So this isn't just, it's, it's nice, we need the self-service, but this is not only for the cell service, but it's also emergency services. So we might have to get the school involved to get a letter of.
And that's what exactly what I told them. It says Verizon would like to hear from the community and the emergency services, the village board. They said that would be helpful as part of the discussion. I think Verizon is looking at the numbers right now more than anything else. But I told them, I've been in a lot of communities where every time they will put a cell tower in, it's a big fight. Community doesn't want it. This is the first community that I've worked in that people will want a cell tower. And it's like, it's like pulling teeth to have them have interest in this community. So I live, I feel like I live in an upside down world when it comes to this aspect. So that's been very, very clear to Verizon, that the community and emergency services are in support of it. They said that's helpful part of the discussion, but I would, I would say that to them again. And so the village board is being willing to talk to them as well and say that we want us, we want, we still have to follow processes in the code. But I don't see much of a pushback to move forward on this project. So I made that very clear to Verizon and the contractor.
So I think what we need to do going forward is, is get a letter from the fire department explaining their concerns of the lack of service in some areas, and then also the police department.
Sure.
So, you know, it's kind of putting them on the line that this is an emergency situation. This is not, you know.
Can you just remind me how the process started? Because any other cell towers I saw be put up, it's really at the request of the carrier. So I've seen Verizon and many municipalities go out, approach the board. Is that how this came about? I don't remember. It's been a couple of years now.
Came with a, a company that wanted to build a tower and then reach out to these.
And then the carrier. So it wasn't the carriers directly that was requesting.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And that's why part of the problem is the carriers, I don't know. Think the numbers does, you know, the population size where we are, don't forget half of it is going to be in the Hudson River. So it's not a very, it's not a conducive kind of area for the whole.
Popular.
Correct, correct. So I think that's part of the problem as well. But, but I definitely.
About was the, the police and the fire department raised some concerns.
In the school district.
And a school district.
Yes.
So, you know, that's really how it all came about. And it seems like the service is getting worse.
It is getting, it's, it's.
Just getting worse.
It's getting worse. Yeah.
And we were hoping the town just, I think that went live.
I believe so.
Okay, that went live over and it did nothing for us. I thought, I was hoping at least the upper part of the village, it would cover that and, you know, give a little more coverage for them, but it didn't affect us at all. Excuse me.
I will reach out to the police, fire, and school district, a letter of support so I can get over to them as well.
Yeah.
And if you, if you on behalf of the board or the board member, write a little letter of support as well.
Yeah.
I can get a little package together and get it to Verizon.
I think now we need to kick it up in gear.
Yep.
If that doesn't work, maybe we need to do some type of a petition and get the residents all involved too. So.
Perfect, thank you.
Let's see, we'll just move that along.
Perfect.
Okay, let's see. Information from officers and departments. Okay, sorry. Justice reports, November 2025. One amount was $1,424. The other was 3,518. Police report.
The monthly call statistics, they had 126 calls. The majority of them were for property checks, where they checked 33 properties. Seventeen were for other complaints and 15 were medical related calls.
Okay, next is highway report.
Highway report for November 2025. Ninety-seven tons of residential garbage was picked up. They were busy doing catch basins and tree, getting up our decorations and bringing in salt and doing a lot of catch basin cleanup in collaboration with the town of Portland. I think they used a shop vac, I mean a shop vac, a vacuum vac.
Yep, correct.
And they're always busy and they're doing a nice job, did a great job decorating for the season, so thank you.
Wastewater plant from November 2025, treated wastewater 7,744,000. Sludge removal 32,500. And on November 20th, the Westchester County Department of Health inspected and there were no violations reported. Building Department?
Yep, that would be me. So this is through November 2025. Orders remedied, five court appearances, one stop work orders, one building permits issued or reviewed, 20. Inspection required for newly issued permits, 15. Inspection on file for permits and compliance inspections, 17. Certificates of occupancy and completion issued were nine. And compliance inspections for resale or refinance were four. Additional items, there was a court appearance for 300 Blakely Avenue. The inspection of the property was not performed to cooperate with the village board court and building department. It's been requested that the property inspection owner remove the illegal tenants and eviction process ordered to be started with a new attorney. And it's been, it was adjourned until December. I don't know if we heard anything.
It's been adjourned to January.
So now it's been adjourned to January. Then we have an update on AMS Construction with the building. The interior construction is moving along as per scheduled. There were three, there were five compliance inspections and they're awaiting a reinspection for the new certificate of occupancy issuance. And the property maintenance issue was reported or was resolved. And that just about does it.
Thank you. All right. Planning Board minutes have been received for November 2025. I'm sorry, Steve, I skipped right over you. I'm sorry. Okay, Buchanan Engine, November 2025, thank you.
No problem. For the month of November, there was three total alarms, one of those being a structure fire. It did occur on November 29th, however, the fire was extinguished by the fire suppression system. There was no notification to the fire department. It only required a investigation by the chief. In addition, Buchanan Engine Company has reached out to, well, the mayor, myself, as liaison. They are seeking support from the board. They are looking to obtain a state grant. There is a state grant available for $425,000 for volunteer fire infrastructure and response equipment. And they would like to see if the, the board would support them in that grant application. I, for one, believe it's a good opportunity and support them.
I agree.
I agree.
And they have been, they've been very successful with getting grants. I think Karen in Adhouse is one of the grant writers there. Yeah, he's, I'm telling you, we, they have been successful. And what I'm understanding, it's, it's for the building, mostly the building and structure, like the windows and things like that. So that would be great if they could get that. So we will get a letter of support together for them, for that.
Is that all they're asking for? Do they need additional research? Okay, sure.
Yep.
Yep.
That's good.
Is this the email we just got?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I just got it this afternoon.
Yeah, I know, I just was looking at it. All right.
There is no prosecutor's report. Attorney's report, Stephanie?
Just a brief update. I think you've all been updated on the strip of land and the back and forth. So counsel for one of the homeowners that is looking to acquire that is continuing her research. I think she was looking through past minutes today from.
1973.
1973. Because I guess it matters how it was acquired.
So is that when the Village of Buchanan purchased it in 70?
Or 85,000.
Could be, yeah. That sounds, that sounds about right.
But it matters how it was, how it was.
How it was, yeah.
Yeah, acquired and what you can do with it afterwards. And it may very well be it's for public use. And if that's in the minutes, then it becomes more difficult or impossible. And that's the same for a license agreement. You know, somebody was mentioning a license agreement, but if you look at, because it was school property and the way you acquired it, and it was, if it was deeded for public use, then even for a license, you can't do purely private use. So you could grant a license if somebody needed to park there and they were going to do a community garden, something for the community. They might do it, but it can't be so. But we're still waiting on counsel, right? Because I think she was just in today doing.
Yeah, she actually did the minutes, she actually found it in the minutes, our minutes. We couldn't find, so school couldn't find anything. But we found our minutes. Sharon's going to make copies and scan them so I can get it as well. She made copies for herself, but it's very interesting reading how we went back and forth. There was issue that the village gave money to the school, gave land to the school district. And then when the village would acquire this property, that school was charging us $85,000. There was some back and forth and there was a 3-2 vote to acquire the property for the day before. They were, that they gave something to the school and the school didn't return the favor. So it'll be interesting reading for the board.
Yeah.
Get your copy in minutes.
Step that had to have been to build the new BV school.
That's exactly right it was. The village gave that land to the school for free. And then school charges $85,000 for this property and the village had to borrow the money.
How's that pass?
That wasn't a good, no good, I share your show. Yeah.
So I get your copy in minutes.
Wow.
Interesting reading.
That's interesting. Pretty interesting how that one. Lot of history, right? Lot of history.
But it's great. She's done a lot of research. She's doing a great job and I think she's doing a great job for, for her clients as well. And she's done a lot of good research for us. So I think we gotta give a clearer picture.
And there's two parties involved. Have we heard from, I know the other party retained counsel?
The other party retained counsel and they actually provided, and as long as say that both parties have made the village home for all the expenses we've made between the survey and the appraisal. So both parties have made us home and the other party also gave us money for escrow in case you want to continue the discussion.
And they also have counsel, who's on every email and is following it all. That's Dan.
Yeah. Yeah. If there's been anything from, you know, because I know one, one side has been active.
One side has been very active.
Informed of what's going.
Right. And what's great about it has been open communication, all emails can be shared with everybody. So everybody's on the same page.
That's good.
The transparency.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. See what happens, right?
Yep.
Yeah. But it's, it's been an adventure with that. Okay, Mayor's Report. So today we celebrated Josephine Antonini. It was her 100th birthday. She's a Buchanan, Buchanan Senior. And proclamations were given from the, given from the village and from the town of Cortland. And yeah, Josephine is, is just an inspiration. Everybody in the seniors absolutely love her. And it was, it was so nicely done. Her son Rick Paragwini, who is also a resident here, got up and spoke about her. And it was, it was a beautiful celebration for her. And Awilda also attended and it was a nice turnout. So happy, happy birthday again, Josephine Antonini. Um, let's see, I have a few things going on. Oh, we, most of the board members went, they, they invited the elected officials to the new racetrack, the HQ Racing at Charles Point at the old Bertolini Building. And for those that don't know, it's an indoor-outdoor multi-level go-kart racing. And it's a beautiful addition to the community. I don't know, I know Awilda was there, Steve and Dan. I know I got in the go-kart. Who else got in the go-kart?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I wasn't allowed to because of my surgery.
And, and they, they had the first responders from Peak Skill there. It was, it was well, it was well planned. They did a nice job.
And so you know, it's not so easy to get in and out of those things because you kind of slide down and you're sitting on the floor. So I told the, the first responders, I said, don't go anywhere until I get out of this thing because I'm not sure if I can get out. So, but they were very helpful. Everyone was helpful. So it was a lot of fun and I just think it's a great addition, you know, for the little kids and the big kids too. It's a fun thing for the community. What else? Oh, and I have a few more update questions I have to ask you yet, Marcus. The other thing I wanted to mention, the decommissioning Oversight Board meeting in December was, I guess you could say, a little lively. It started out with the school superintendent, Mr. Trombley, making a statement about several things. And one of the things he commented about was, of course, you know, the school needs more money. And I, I've sat there listening very attentively. And I believe it's up to $3 million now that money was given from the state in addition, from Senator Harkam and also from Dana Levenberg. And so he spoke about that. He also spoke about asking for an extension to the cessation fund. Our cessation fund runs out in a couple of years. And the cessation fund was a seven-year basically bridge from the state. And it's given to all communities that have energy producing facilities. And once they close, of course, there's a big gap in the taxes in revenue. So he mentioned about extending that. And I was, I spoke later, I said, yes, I'm in full agreement with that. I told him also that very happy that the school had gotten that amount of money because it does help the village residents also with our school taxes. Seven, about approximately 70% of our total tax bill is the school. So it, it did help us, but then I also continued to say, I had Senator Harkam to the right of me, so I took advantage of that. And I, I also continued to say that, yes, the village would be in complete support of extending the cessation fund. And also we are facing some heavy infrastructure going forward that needs to be addressed. And I had also asked for the Village of Buchanan to get some additional funding considering we are the host community and we lost the most money with the closure of Indian Point. We lost 50%. The school lost, I think, approximately 30%. So we'll see where that goes because we're going to talk about the New York Swims Grant in a minute. One of the things I got a little upset about is as we were having discussions, Westchester County legislator Amelia Ullage spoke up and said something to the effect that she didn't want to see a data storage center there. She was concerned about environmental and we need to talk about what's going on, what's, what's going to go in there and blah, 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 blah. And once again, I had to put this right out there. I, I thanked her for her thoughts and her comments, but whatever is going to go in over there is going to be approved by the village board, the planning board, the zoning board, and the village residents. So this has happened before at other meetings where people from the outside of the Village of Buchanan, and I realize it's an important piece of property for the area. I understand that. But I have been told over the years, many different things. And one of them was a lot of the anti-nuclear people want to see total solar panels on that property. You never, ever want to do that. We are going to waste that beautiful piece of property that we haven't been able to access for over six years. If solar panels go up, that's it. You will not have use of that property. So it's a long, it's, it's a long process yet. The 60 acres doesn't appear that that's going to be anytime soon that they'll release that. The area that they are working on is close to Certainty, the sheet rock or the woolboard plant. So they are currently working on that. That would be the first piece of property that they would potentially release. They are working on cleaning that up and getting that ready. They did mention Holtech last year that they were interested in putting a data storage center there. And I don't know if you have any further information on this, Marcus. I know they were waiting to see if there was enough power available to even do that. So they were going to NISO to ask them.
Right, they haven't got a response yet. I'm still working with them.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think that's a possibility.
I don't know whether they're going to get that much electricity.
No, it's, it's quite a bit. And, and I, and I also said, I'm not sold on a data storage center there. Throughout the country, you see a lot of people pushing back on the data storage centers. So might not be what we want here, but it's a discussion that will happen and, you know, with input from everybody. But yeah, no, that's, yeah, I, I've just, over the years, heard people with their, what, not only their thoughts, but they're basically demanding what they want to see there. So I just want to put that, put that out there and that got settled. And so now they know where we're all coming from. So we'll see if we get a million dollars too. Lots of luck, right? Uh, what else is going on? It's been a crazy, crazy time of year.
Only six days in.
Yeah, can you imagine? It's gonna be a fun year. I'm gonna go back to the updates. So I know you sent us an email, the village had put in for the New York Swims Grant. And we did not get that.
You saw where the money went.
Well, yeah. You know, really, we were hoping, but that, you know, let's be honest, let's all be honest, that was a long shot.
Yeah.
We're a small community. It's gonna go to more of the city type and, you know.
But, but you would think with Indian Point shutting down, the financial impact to the community, they're the ones who shut down the Indian Point. You would think they would give it, give us something. That was very discouraging.
Well, in their mind, in their mind, they're thinking that the money for the sewer treatment plant. So you see what I'm saying, like, so, but you know, what annoys me, and I know we're a small community, I know we're a village, but you see, like, Peak Skill just gets money, I mean, thrown at them. And I understand they're a city, I know they're a bigger population, but you see these other communities between the DRI grants, this grant, that grant. I mean, it's millions of dollars and you couldn't, couldn't just like help us out a little bit? I mean, we're not asking for millions of dollars here. But that, that was a long shot, but we, we had to try.
Yes.
We, we had to at least try for that grant.
However, with that grant, they, they only allocated, I think, 20% of that.
Correct.
Yeah.
We can reapply again.
We have the opportunity again to reapply and hopefully the next round.
Correct. And just to give you an update, based on that loss of that grant, I reached out to our consultant to give me a proposal now. The report was the, all the, all the inlets and outlets are in pretty bad condition. So the idea would be maybe to start replacing some of the pipes and, and get a price for the concrete removal and the pipe, remove, and the pipe. And then at this point, we just have to fix what breaks. But I would hate to, and you know, it only, it's only working during the summer when the pool is working. So if something breaks down, we might have to close the pool and make the repair. So we might have to do Band-Aids until we decide to do the entire deck area with all the inlet. So I'm gonna guess the price proposal for the board can consider that for future capital project.
Yeah, I mean, you know, let's look at it and what we can do, we can do and going forward. And how much, you know, that was another question, the kiddie pool. What was the cost on doing that again?
Half a million.
Half a million. Yeah, that slipped my mind, sorry. I was, I was trying to, okay. Code Red. We did put a Code Red out the last meeting, the last snowstorm.
Yep.
And I'm not sure if everyone got it. I'm hearing not everyone got it. So there's a change in the system. And so if you did not get the Code Red, please go on the Village of Buchanan page and re-sign up. Because with the change, I, I, we might have lost some people. So it's always important to be able to be in the loop. If there's a storm, if there's an emergency, a Code Red will go out and notify everyone. So we, years ago, we didn't have the Code Red and we had a situation here in the village. We had somebody on Albany Post Road got in a car accident, totaled their car, jumped out of their car, running through all the backyards in the village and people were scared. They, it was at night. So it's good to have the Code Red. Not only just storms, but there's times, you know, that we can communicate with the public and let them know if something's going on. And water main breaks, we had a water main break on First Street today. So what else, Marcus? Kitchen remodel. I went in today, the kitchen is getting remodeled in the office downstairs.
Yeah, we, they, it was from micro countertop and all the water was getting into the back of it and it was getting rotten. So it was an opportunity to get that out. I was concerned about mold and stuff like that. So we're getting that repaired and what's great about it is being done in-house. Our guys are doing the work themselves. So I think we have an opportunity now, you know, we have skilled guys now that are willing to work. We got Tony, he's a good plumber. We got a good price for electrical work, and all the hardware and the work is being done in-house. So I gotta thank the guys for, they volunteered to do it without me asking for it, so we'll do it, so it was great to have that kind of reaction.
We got, yeah, we got a talented crew, so that's, that's good. And the only other thing, I, I saw this this afternoon, I just, I couldn't believe it. I almost hit this guy on an electric wheelchair. He was on Albany Post Road, and he was not on the sidewalk because he couldn't get on the sidewalk. There was still a lot of snow. So before the next storm, I think we need to look at what sidewalks, especially, especially on nine A. That's very dangerous there. And whoever the property owners are, you know, we have to, we have to treat everybody equally, equally, so everybody does their sidewalks, so maybe with those properties to send out the code, to make sure that the sidewalks are clean, whatever the code is, within a certain amount of hours. Because that, I, all of a sudden, he was like right there, and I was like, oh my God, what is he doing in the middle of the road? And then I saw that, so please, if we can address that throughout the village, that would be great, especially Albany Post Road.
Can't something be posted on the digital board to remind homeowners to clean their sidewalks?
It's part of code.
Yeah, but you know, a little reminder doesn't help, and that's very visible.
Yep.
The newsletter.
Utilize the sign.
She does it all the time, yeah.
But we cover all our bases.
Yep.
And then sometimes there's some new people, but some of them are businesses too that need to, they know, they know they should do it. So you know, just a little friendly reminder, as they say. Okay, I think that's it for me, I'm gonna start with Anthony this evening, I'll go right down the row.
Good evening, everybody, again, so the AMS updates, I saw the emails, everything looks like it's going well, Dan, give us an update on that. I know they're pretty much on hold with everything exterior now, but it looks good, they're, they're pushing, moving right along. Anything on the two properties? I want to know if we had, just to keep the public up to speed with what's going on with Lakely Avenue and, and Lenzco property.
No, no update, both contractor, both developers still doing their due diligence. They both say when we're ready to present, we'll present to the village board, but nothing.
Yeah, there's nothing going on.
No.
Okay. All right, that's good. I, I was very, I was upset about the swims grant, I thought we would maybe get something out of that, I know it's very important for us to get this pool up and going. I did have a conversation with a representative from Holtech though, about monies that Teresa did bring up about a baseball field, and they are willing to talk about putting it somewhere else. So I think that maybe it's not as much as, clearly as much as we're gonna need, but it will be a helpful start to invest that money in something like that. The code red, I know the code red went out, I did not get it, I know that it wasn't out, but I know that we need to update that system, like Teresa said. It is effective, the guys did a great job, the community responded anyway, I think everybody gets the plan. You know, there was limited cars on the streets, the guys did a really good job cleaning up the streets. I commend them for the work they did and the hours they put in. And the data storage thing with, up at Holtech, you know, it is a discussion for all of us. I feel that, you know, that property, you know, we get a one-shot deal using that property, and we are not to be dictated how to zone it, you know, and, and plan it. I think that's something that we need to take seriously and, and make the right decisions, John, and, and I think we're all on the same page with that. And it's cold out, stay warm, and stay off the streets for these guys cleaning up, that's all, thank you.
I think it's, didn't they say like fifty on Friday?
Yeah.
Nine.
Yeah.
That, what do they call that, ammonia weather, when it warms up like that? Be careful. Okay, Wilda, what do you have?
All right, I just have a few things, first of all, Happy New Year to everyone, I wish everyone a happy and blessed year. I hope we have some warm weather that continues, because I'm done with the snow. Once again, happy birthday to Josephine, I'd like trustee Capocotti, Laker, and Stuart to know that I delivered your message to her and the family. I told them that although you could not go because of work obligations, you did wish her a happy and prosperous day, and the family told me to thank you.
Thank you.
I did not forget. As a liaison to the schools and to the police department, I continue keeping in touch with them. The superintendent, I have been working on a few projects, once they're completed, I will definitely report back. And I have one thing that I'd like to discuss at executive session.
Okay. Is it?
It's about the police department.
Okay, so personnel.
Personnel.
I just need it, yeah, know that, okay.
And thank you for coming.
All right, Steve, what do you have for us?
Thank you, I also would like to wish Antonini a happy one-hundredth birthday, so I could not attend the party. I did see some pictures of, like, it was a very well-attended event, good time, so happy birthday again. And, you know, Happy New Year to everyone, I'm looking forward to what 2026 brings with the board, I think there's a lot of exciting things here in the village to look forward to for this upcoming year. I know, Marcus, you and I had a discussion, and I think we started preliminary discussions with AMS and the possibility of having an open house. I know as they move forward, they're gonna look to, to start opening up in the springtime, was the tentative date. I believe that it'd be beneficial for the residents to have an opportunity to go take a look, if they're interested, and, and see what, you know, what's being built over there first, before anybody else has an opportunity to. I think that, you know, if, if possible, we allow the residents an opportunity to do that.
Yep, definitely a great idea, talking about maybe setting up a signing sheet, first come, first served, a couple, that way it limits the limit, but they actually all look, it's a great idea, they all go and look into it, and they're gonna get back to us some details, then report back to the board, and then we get the information out.
Great, and then just looking at the calendar going ahead, just, you know, there's, there's some months that, you know, we're meeting maybe three days after, you know, we have a workshop, and then three days later, we have like a regular meeting, or, or, you know, almost less than a week. So I don't know if maybe we just want to look, you know, January twenty-seventh is a workshop, and then February third is, is the February meeting. So I don't know if maybe we just want to look at combining a meeting, or just a thought that maybe we have that discussion.
Yeah, sometimes it's been like a week span, like you have it one Tuesday.
And a couple of times, we've had, you know, like, tonight, we have a very light agenda. Some workshops, we don't have much really at all. You know, I like to give the residency opportunity to come in and speak with us, of course, but maybe if we just kind of look at, at what the calendar looks like going forward. Just my suggestion, but that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, and Marcus, do you know how many units have been rented yet at AMS?
The last time they told me, an update was thirty percent.
Thirty percent.
Oh, wow.
Dan, what do you have for us?
Just Happy New Year to everybody, also, thank you to HQ Racing for hosting us. Pretty impressive facility, if you, if you get a chance to go over, if you're a racing enthusiast, even if you're not a racing enthusiast, it's, it's a pretty neat venue over there, so I, I suggest people go over and either just, you can just be a spectator if you want. The, Steve and I were just finalizing up, we shared up a date for the Buchanan St. Patrick's Day Parade, it looks like it's gonna be the fifteenth of March, which is a Sunday. We're looking for any nominees for parade aids and a grand marshal, so if anybody has anybody in, in, in mind, feel free to email myself or Steve Laker. We're looking forward to a, a, a nice parade this year. Looks like we've got Local Twenty-One back again, which will hopefully lead us down Tade Avenue and look for a good day for that. We touched on the, the Holtech monies, I'd really like to see that maybe go towards the pool, if that's possible. I think we need to have a discussion with Holtech in detail on that. Also, we're looking for volunteers for the Centennial Committee, before you know it, you know, time goes by pretty quickly. So anybody that's interested in serving on the Centennial Committee, please reach out to Cindy, and Cindy will put your name on a list with contact information. Also, I wanted to know the status on the employee handbook, the union was supposed to be reviewing that.
Both of us have copies, I have not, I'm not receiving any responses for either union, I know they're looking, still looking at it, but I have not got a response.
Can somebody, can we have somebody call and follow up on that, just see where they're at?
Seventy update.
That'd be great, thank you, Marcus. And then the last thing I had, I wanted an update on was the, the abandoned home on Lakely Avenue. We were, they were talking about going to auction on that, I was wondering if there's any status with a date that maybe it's on a docket.
I'll follow up tomorrow, so you guys can email, I know they said they're gonna put on the next auction, but I didn't get a date the last time, but I'll double-check for you and get back to you.
I did see where they cleaned out the property, yeah, they cleaned up the property, so that, you know, that's a good thing, but.
And it's good, they're gonna keep retaining it from this point forward to the property, so.
So that's, at least we got some progress to, you know, in that respect, but, and that's really it. And again, happy birthday to Mrs. Antonini. Quite remarkable to hit the hundred-year mark, so God bless her.
Easy feat, right?
That's all I have.
The Centennial Committee, do you think we're ready to have another meeting that we could have before the workshop, this month's workshop? Does the board think?
Cindy, how many people we have signed up, rough idea? And I have, I have another name too, so, yeah. I'm, I'm fine if somebody wants to, you know, set something up, we can set something up.
Dan, are you chairing that committee?
That's what I was asking now.
Are you gonna chair?
I, I'd kind of wanted to wait a little bit until we get, get the Buchanan St. Patrick's Day Parade done, we're trying to finalize that, but.
I just didn't know what you wanted to do.
I, I think that's the, I think that would be the more logical thing, this way I don't have too much on my plate, but.
Well, we could bring a meeting together, maybe we could find a community member to chair, you know, maybe we can get somebody there that wants to take it on.
Okay.
For sure.
But it doesn't hurt if it's, it doesn't hurt to have just an initial meeting either, so it's whatever, I'm flexible, whatever anybody wants to do, but I do want to get the St. Patrick's Day Parade wrapped up and under our belt.
Through month, yeah, through month, spring.
And Steve, did you want to set up a meeting, did we want to announce a meeting for the St. Patrick's Day Parade, just to meet?
We'll put something out there.
We'll put something out. Again, we just found out today the date, so.
Yeah.
Good. And Marcus, it's your turn.
Sure, I got a couple of quick things, just so the board know and the public, we've been talking about the LWRP for some time. We finally got comments back from the Department of State, back to the committees, so all the committees received them. Really nothing of substance, they just want to get some clarification on some of the statements in the LWRP. So the, so the town, town committee and the village committee, I think about getting together sometime in the next couple of weeks, then get responses back to the state, and again, then the state needs time to review those responses.
Yeah, they take their time.
Correct, and then, and hopefully if that's get finalized, then we can schedule public hearings and get public comments and move the process forward. So I think, but I think the response, the question is not really that much of a hurdle, so I think some clarification, some language. So I don't think this state is gonna take that long to finish their review, and then we got a public document out, put it on the website, get comments, and then you have public hearings. So that's one thing, the other thing is, a while back, if you remember the fire department, the, the air truck with the issue with the compressor, they finally found a company that is willing, that the committee has found, we were talking about a hundred fifty thousand dollars for the air truck. They found somebody to think that can meet that budget, in fact, maybe be a little, little below it. So they just wanted me to give you an update on that, they're gonna move forward for it, the money comes out of the, the money we have for the fire department, but I think they can actually get, get a repair to replace, and then with the oil pump for the old system, be able to sell that, get some money back into the, into our, back, reimbursed back into our system. So, so it's giving you an update, they're gonna, they're gonna move forward, the committee is happy about who they found, and they want to send the truck up to get the repairs. Moving forward with the, with the air pump, okay?
Thank you.
That's it.
And if you could get to the board with what the funds are in there.
Yeah, Cindy, Cindy can give it to you, yep.
Yeah, just send that out to the board, that would be great. And when we're talking about the LWRP, you know, we, sometimes we use abbreviations, and not everybody is, knows what they are. So the LWRP is a local waterfront revitalization project, program.
Program.
So that's what Marcus was, was talking about.
Thank you.
Okay, any comments from the floor, and I just want to mention, there's a three-minute time limit, and so if anybody would like to get up.
Who's timing, for we to be fair?
And nobody has any comments tonight? Okay, all right, but thank you all for coming, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss a personnel issue, can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, thanks for coming, and have a great Buchanan day.